So if someone's not, for example, we have some people on the agenda.
I'm here.
Did anybody have something that's not on the agenda, citizen wise? I don't see anybody. First, the discussion I just discussed, so we start off at Bridge Street. We have Mr. Paul working tonight, and I know you wanted to mention coming first before.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have Mr. Rick Paul and Hannah Davis joining us today. The request is to lease a small piece of property immediately north of their building. They would intend, if it is approved, to build a deck and try and maintain their business. In addition, they want to do some additional development. Staff has met with them at least twice, and from a planning perspective, I think Mr. Mueller has said it's something that could be done. There may be some conditions we'll have to work with. I think Public Works Director Tom Bradley has talked with the Army Corps of Engineers, and they've indicated an openness as well. So I would like to invite Hannah and Mr. Paul to join us if they would. The direction from the commission tonight would be whether or not you're interested, and if you are, you can certainly direct our city attorney, Mr. Moore, to work on a lease arrangement. That will be brought back to the commission for...
Basically, like Tim said, this is just regarding leasing the property to the right of the white lights because we'd like to build a deck. We already have picnic tables over there, but I think it would be much more appealing to have a deck where we could move the tables. It would look more inviting, I think. Our proposal, I think you all should have a copy of it. If the city will lease the property to us for a dollar for 10 years, we will paint the building by the summer of 2015 and install a new awning by the summer of 2015. And if the city will lease the property to us for $100 a year for 10 years, we will paint the building by summer of 2016 and install a new awning by the summer of 2016. And I don't know if you all got these pictures, but it kind of shows just where the property is. Where the property is, and we have the tables set up.
If nobody has an objection, we can just move on.
Okay.
I think, is everybody okay?
I think we're all okay.
We're all full?
All right. That works.
Save you there.
You're welcome to. I was saying, I think it buys more.
Oh, I'm good. If you are, you're not good.
I just have one quick question, which I'm all for too. On that dollar, so the dollar's 2015, the hundred bucks a year is 2016.
Right.
I just want to make sure that our city attorney has that in the agreement, so that's done on your own part. We seem to run into things where we do these, and they don't always end up the way they were supposed to.
Right. I think we have, I'm assuming you all got the, did you all get a copy of this? And I think, you know, as long as it's stated, you know, by your attorney, then...
I just want to make sure we have that piece in it.
Yeah, at that point, we would be in agreement.
We're anxious to get started.
Oh, it's great for the community.
Absolutely. I mean, it's going to make the whole area look better. We also, at some point, want to put the neon lights back up that went around the top of the building. So our goal is to enhance, we'll actually bring it back to the way it looked in the beginning with the deck and with that, coupled with the shops across the street. Bridge Street's looking better and better. Go ahead, Hannah.
If you all are good, we're good. I know everybody's itching to...
Thank you.
Somebody want to ask a question?
Well, the one thing I'd say, Mayor, is that I'll need to talk to either Hannah or Rick about the approval from the Corps of Engineers, just because the lease would need to say that the lease was subject to the approval of the Corps of Engineer. And my recommendation would be that we get that approval in writing, because we hate for you all to build something based upon a verbal, and then someone from Washington, DC or something come in and say...
Okay.
Right. So we'll be, I'll get...
Yeah, whatever we need to do, we're definitely willing to work with it.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Great idea.
Okay. Melanie is here. Melanie, is this our proposal? Oh, there's one. I guess...
Will you be able to help you?
You can, sure.
Okay. Thank you all for listening to this proposal. I'm Melanie Van Houten, and I'm the artistic director of Josephine Sculpture Park. I'm also the founder of the park. Essentially, did you guys all get the really brief proposal that I sent? I sent you something brief just to see if you would even be interested in me pursuing this project. Basically, to give you just a quick background, is Josephine Sculpture Park received sponsorship money from Herred Concrete. And we felt that the best acknowledgement of this gift was for us to be able to expand our existing satellite sculpture program that we started in 2011. And we initiated that project with the Kentucky Employee Credit Union, and we continue that to the present. We actually have a three-year contract with them that we renew every three years, so that's on for a few more years with them. So it's essentially that same kind of program, so most of the, I guess, the how it would happen is essentially in place, if you all are interested in us kind of moving forward with that. We came up, I spoke with David Herred when they wanted to do the sponsorship of the park, and we came up with several locations and ideas, you know? Like at the credit union, we have sculptures on their property. Well, that's not real feasible for Herred Concrete. You know, the grounds aren't really a high-traffic area. David liked the idea of having something near the amphitheater, so that was kind of our first thought. We're certainly open to other ideas, and this could evolve, you know, into different things, but essentially, we do have something in place that could facilitate it pretty simply, I think, if you guys are interested in us pursuing it. So I guess from here, it's just, are you interested in it? So what do you need from me to move forward? We would really like to get a sculpture installed in the spring. We have one that's going to be installed at Tourism as soon as the concrete is poured, so that's the first one in the series of David's sponsorship. So, do you guys have questions?
I think you just answered my first question. Who else have you been working with? I was thinking about Riverfront Development, people that are already on that track, and you just mentioned Tourism.
Yes, yes. So Joy and I have had conversations. She does know that this proposal is in the works, so, and then I've talked with Jim, with Parks. That was who, you know, I went to first, just because I'm not real familiar with how all this works. I said, "Who do I need to talk to?" And he said, "Submit a proposal to you guys, and then we'll go from there." So basically, the way that it happens at the credit union is, we essentially manage the program. We do the call for art. We manage all the applications that come in. We select, we have a committee. We select three that we think are appropriate, or based on the size, you know, which is different for every site, and also, you know, the content and, you know, anything else that anyone might be interested in. And then I submit those three to the credit union, and then they decide which one they want. And that's the same thing I did with Joy at Tourism, too. So I've never had anybody not pick one of the three. Usually, it's tough to pick which one you want, because you usually like more than one. But so we would do, you know, again, it's our program. It exists already, so I'm not asking you guys to do more work or pay for anything. So that's generally the proposal, I think. I don't know that I have much more for you, unless you have other questions.
Was there interest in having more?
The idea was, that he and I came up with, and again, this is brainstorming, this is our initial idea, was that it's a three-year sponsorship, so each year we would do one. Now, that could be that we add one each year, or it could be that we have one spot next to the amphitheater, or wherever it ends up being, and we just rotate it out each year. I'm totally open to whatever you guys really see as the best way for this to happen.
We think it's a great idea. We appreciate it. I think everybody on the commission is excited to see what's going to be placed, and, I mean, I especially think it's great that they have public art. Can't speak for the others, and they don't, they certainly make their own comments, but...
Seconded. So what are our next steps?
I do, I love art, too, but the questions that Mr. Moore raised are potential problems I think we need to talk about to make sure we don't get ourselves in a problem. I'm all for art, and, but I think we need to be careful and make sure we put it in the right place. Is it something that the city wants to do? And because there are other places that she's already putting it, and if we put it in one place, you know, where is it going to, you know? Like I said, Rob had six questions, and really, I think we sort of need to address those questions or talk about them a little bit. I don't know if this is the right venue or not, but I'm a little nervous.
I agree with Mr. Roach. I'd like to address Rob's questions.
Could I see my email? And this was, these questions, Ms. Van Houten, were, not to discourage it, but just to make sure that the program's done so that it's fair to everyone, because there may be other sculptors that want to exhibit art, you know, at the Riversview Park or wherever the art's going to be. So, you know, some of the questions I had, you know, would we need to develop a process to allow anyone to submit their proposals on art being exhibited? You know, then we'd have to create a committee to review the submissions. We'd develop standards to be used by the committee in selecting the art to be exhibited. We'd, you know, draft documents provided for the exhibit of the art and releasing the city from the liability in the art in the event the art's stolen, with all these art things. But anyway...
Sure. Right.
You know, the documents would need to grant the city the right to photograph the art and use it in advertisements, because I know artists certainly want to protect their art.
Absolutely.
But anyway, these are, include a requirement that the exhibitor of the art agree to remove it at the end of the time period.
Absolutely. I mean, all that would be in the legal contract, which I think is maybe phase two of what I came here to do, which is to see if you were interested in it. I can address any of those questions. I mean, basically...
Well, maybe the thing would be to do with, for me to meet with Melanie and then just come up with a proposal and then provide that in writing to the commission, so you all can tweak it as you want to tweak it, and that way...
Sure.
I think we're all on the same page, though.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, my interest is not to put some crazy thing down there that people are going to hate, right? I mean, we want to promote, it's an opportunity for us to promote the Sculpture Park and to acknowledge the sponsorship, you know, from Herred and their support of the arts, which, you know, they've been a big supporter of the amphitheater, too, which is kind of how that came about. But really, it's, you know, it's in line with our mission, which is to provide free opportunities for our community to experience the arts, and that's really what comes down to it. So, I mean, I would agree that we're, I don't want to, you know, put some weird thing out there, but I think it is important to have it all specified in a document, and we have that with the credit union. I have like a ten-page legal contract with them that is...
Sure. And, you know, we'd want to give other artists the opportunity to participate, you know, so they can submit their proposals and then have some kind of...
Yeah, we do a national call, so, I mean, anybody could submit proposals. I'm not handpicking people. But within that, then, I would review those and then, again, submit three or how many you wanted, but I think three is kind of a good number to pick from, and then you could pick from there, but...
Well, you all answered my question, which is, Rob meeting with you and coming up with something for us to look at, it's made sense.
What kind of timeframe or was it...
I would like to be able to install the work in the spring.
Do we have to meet before Thanksgiving or first week in December?
No, for sure. I mean, that's what, however your timeframe works is fine with me. I mean, I'm here, so...
I'll hit your telephone number.
Okay, yeah. When Tim has my email, well, yeah, sure.
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you all. If you haven't had a chance to visit the Sculpture Park, I think it's personal, it's something that's going to go with it. You can change the order. April's here.
That's right. I just wanted to get the ball rolling some day.
If you could bring your...
Sure, I can do that.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Thanks for listening. Okay.
Next item is, well, we have work. Did we need to do something with Bobby? Are we doing something?
Did you pick up my...
He's going to do the, oh, you're doing the same. You're going to do the San Antonio Sewer. So, Art Director Steve Delta and Mr. Bob Pennington. You ready?
Yeah. Appreciate Bob coming tonight. He's going to go over some information for the sewer, some alternatives to consider for sewer funding going forward, so, Bob, can you...
Okay, I'll go ahead and get started. First, before we hit sewer, though, congratulations on the rating increase on your GO debt. It went from AA minus to AA. There's either four or five AA credits in the state, so that's something certainly to be proud of. Also, we had a successful bond sale last week for the Aquatic Center. The GO bonds were sold. We had five bidders on the transaction, so successful sale. We issued debt, 25-year debt at 3.409 percent. So awesome deal, and it was a good success for the city. Just wanted to mention that before we jumped into the sewer. Did everybody get the handout on the sewer? And I apologize, we made some last-minute tweaks, is the reason you got a second set of numbers.
I think I got it in my box out there.
So it should be the ones that survived.
It does, sure.
I'm sorry, just had a little...
We look at quite a few different iterations on the model, and every time you make a change, it affects something, so we needed to make a last-minute adjustment here. As this group knows, I've been here before talking about the sewer model and the cash flow and the analysis, and I mentioned probably two or three years ago that this is going to be a managed process. It's something that, you know, we're going to have to stay on top of and look at year after year until we get to the capital projects that are before us. And, you know, everybody knows, for the most part, we're looking at the concipetry projects, and you're not, you know, you're not alone in the country. There's a whole lot of other cities that are out there that are dealing with a unfortunate similar problem. But the good news is, we are managing it properly, and we're on top of it. We meet regularly to go over the model and the capital needs. Also, as I've mentioned before, we have looked at a bunch of different scenarios. We've looked at all cash funding. We've looked at all bond funding. We've looked at a mix of cash and bonds. We've looked at raising rates, not raising rates, deferring rates, delaying rates, and just every scenario that you can imagine in order to soften blow on the rate payers. What I have in front of you tonight is a spreadsheet kind of like this, and it's four main scenarios. You'll notice on version four that we go through a whole bunch of different options, and, you know, these are just a few of the many scenarios that we've looked at. But let me, let me just kind of start at the top of this spreadsheet, and as I go through it, if you've got questions, just holler at me, and I'll stop, and we'll talk about it. Scenario one, basically, that is no rate increase and cash funding. We've said for years that this scenario doesn't work, but it's always been the scenario we've looked at. Scenario two is again cash funding, and it has a proposed rate increase January 15 and a subsequent one January of 17. Again, you really just can't feasibly cash fund these projects, even with, you know, significant rate increases, and it's really not fair to the current rate payers. I mean, you're investing in long-term projects, and you, you know, you should finance the projects over the long term. Scenario three is no rate increase but bond funded. Again, it's not going to work. So when you move into scenario four, that's what we need to kind of slow down and think about, and what that is, it's a mix of cash and bonds with rate increases. And what we're going to, what we want to focus in on tonight is, where do we start those rate increases? And when I say it's a mix of cash and bonds, I want to take that one step further. It's a mix of cash, bonds, and KIA loans. You all have been very successful in securing KIA loans. It's low-cost financing. It's sometimes hard to get, but we also, when I say bonds, I'm also talking KIA loans as well. So scenario four, as I look at this spreadsheet, again, we're looking at a capital plan over the next 10 years of about, you know, 90-plus million dollars. So it's a significant capital plan. It involves the consent decree projects and other maintenance, you know, needed projects over the years, and we've looked at that very close, and we've looked at it out for 10 years. So 94 million is consistent on all scenarios. The other item that's consistent on all scenarios is the inflation increase. Every year, July 1, we have an inflationary increase. From a modeling standpoint, we've assumed 1.5 percent for that increase. Now, let's drill down a little bit deeper. Scenario 4A, again, 94 million. We have 1.5 percent inflationary increase, and we have assumed a 7.5 percent increase January 1 of 15 and another one January 1 of 17. That is, that is an option. That's one that we can look at. What that option does, it puts too much cash in play, too much of a rate increase in play too soon. If you look at the last two columns, days' cash on hand and debt service coverage, from an analytical standpoint, that's what we're really paying attention to. We want to make sure we have adequate days' cash on hand in reserves for the city, and we've determined that adequate days' cash on hand is going to be between 150 to 200 days. Preference is to keep it closer to 200 days' cash on hand of available cash surpluses. Debt service coverage is not a problem. We need to make sure debt service coverage stays above 1.2 times. And what that means is, for every $100 in debt service, annual debt service you have to pay, you need to demonstrate that you've got $120 available. That's not the issue. So what we need to do is put a structure out there that provides enough cash and bonds to build, you know, the capital outlay plan and to also, you know, maintain that 120 debt service coverage and maintain adequate cash. So if you look at 4A, again, that's, these are just scenarios. That scenario assumes a 7.5 percent increase in January 15 and 1 of 17. You can see that the days' cash in the low point over a 10-year period is 360 days. So we're well above the average. My point, or that we're well above the 200-day need here. My point is, I don't think you need to have a rate increase of 7.5 percent come January 1 of 15, okay? Let's go into scenario 4B. Again, inflationary increase each year, July 1, and it assumes a rate increase of January 1 of 16 and 1 of 18. And you can see that the days' cash drops a little bit. Again, we're trying to target between 150 and 200 days' cash on hand. Let me say this, I mentioned the rating earlier. It's important to maintain certain metrics, days' cash and debt service coverage, so we keep the rating, okay? Scenario 4C, again, following the same pattern here. Instead of, you know, January 16, we would have a rate increase January of 17 and 1 of 19, 7.5 percent. It's at that one, it drops you below the 200 days for the first time. It's still in the safe zone, but it drops you below the 200 days, okay? Those, the ordinance that was put in place, I believe a year ago, and we've looked at this over the last several years, but I believe the ordinance that was put in place called for a rate increase January 1 of 15 and January 1 of 16, each of 7.5 percent. We've kind of followed that model of 7.5 percent increases, and if you remember, that's an adjustment downward from what we looked at several years prior to that. Another group of scenarios we looked at were a way to kind of soften, if you will, the rating increase or the rate increase. And scenario 4D, 4E, and 4F, what they do is, they take that 7.5 percent and they bust it up into 2.5 percent increases, okay? So scenario 4D will show a rate increase, starting January 1 of 15, of 2.5 percent, and you've got five subsequent rate increases, 2.5 percent each through 2020, okay? So that is, you know, that is an option or a scenario we looked at. Again, that jumps your cash above 200 days. If you look at 4E, and I'm going kind of fast here, so interrupt me if you've got questions. If you look at 4E, that starts these incremental increases of 2.5 percent on January 1 of 16. Again, five subsequent increases through 2021, and you can see that that really hits your biggest hit on your days' cash. That takes you down, or that's not your biggest hit, the most significant hit on your days' cash that we've looked at so far. That takes it down to 161. That's starting to get a little bit lower than we would prefer. And then scenario 4F, that defers, you know, same strategy, 2.5 percent increases, defers it to 17, five subsequent increases of 2.5 percent out to 22, and that really hits your days' cash. That's a scenario that we certainly would not recommend. But again, we have looked at all kinds of different scenarios and options and, you know, ways to minimize the rate increase, soften the rate increase, defer the rate increase. You know, some of the scenarios that we, or I focused in on are 4E. If you looked at 4E, that starts the incremental increases where we bust up to 7.5 percent into 3.25s, starting that in January of 16. That allows us to maintain the days' cash on hand projection in between that 150 and 200 days. That's a scenario that could work. Question?
What about Sean?
Well, I had one, but he just hit it, because I was saying, you were saying that 161 4E was a little lower than normal, and I said, well, it falls between our 150 and 200.
Yeah, 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 well, lower than the other, the previous ones we had looked at, yeah. But being between the 150 and 200 is a comfort level days' cash.
Well, like, so the 4D. Oh, the 4D. All it means is we could start it one year earlier, correct?
Yeah, you would start it January of 15. Start it next, January of next year, you'd have 2.5, 2.5, 2.5, and then we would come back again and break up the second 7.5 percent and have it in 18, 19, and 20. That keeps you at pretty solid days' cash on hand.
Yeah, I don't see any point in, like, postponing it for a year, if that, if we're going to be, it looks like that's pretty, that's, I like 4D, Mayor.
I think I've heard others say they like 4D, too.
I like 4E.
Yeah, I kind of like E better, too, actually. Why do you all like 4E better?
Because it still falls in between it, and it puts off the increase a year.
But, I mean, why would you want to put it off if you can...
Because it's cheaper.
Well, but, but...
I mean, you've got a good point. I don't know that there's...
I mean, it's like, the commissioners, I mean, I think all commissions tend to want to put things off as long as they can, but, I mean, it's got, we got, look at the difference between 244 days and 161 days. That's quite a big margin.
Well, but you're not earning anything on that cash, and you're taking it from the consumers, making use of money themselves, and boosts the economy.
Well, if we were going to go with 4E...
I'll say it.
If we were going to go with 4E...
Let's see, let's see what they think. I mean, I'm not...
Yeah, let me make just one comment. I don't know if this sways anyone one direction or another, but we analyze, don't get me wrong, it makes no difference to me whether it's 4D or 4E, but we analyze over a 10-year ... But we analyze over a 10-year period. Actually, we went up 20 years, but looking specifically over 10 years, you hit your low points in eight, nine, and 10, okay? And that's, you know, that, we're trying to manage it. And again, we're trying to, you know, soften the impact as much as we can. You know, at some point, we're going to have to have rate increases. But just so everyone knows, these low points, for the most part, are in kind of like the eighth, ninth, and 10th year.
And so, and then, and then aren't we, it looks to me like we're doing an analysis each year...
We are.
...to determine whether or not we need to tweak what you've come in and said, because we have, it has tweaked a number of times in the last four or five years before I was on, but I know the mayor's been through these. But, so, I guess that would lead me to stick with the 4E, because then if it doesn't look like it's working, we could tweak it next year. But you guys are saying you don't care, you don't care which one.
Who, me?
Yeah.
No, I think it's manageable under either scenario. At some point, with the capital plan we've got in front of us, there's going to be rate increases. And we're coming closer to that date.
And there are rate increases under 4E. It just puts them off one year, correct?
Yeah, they start in 16.
16, it's supposed to be 15.
And again, we've taken the 7.5 and just busted it into thirds. Just to soften it. And also, these assume an increase in January, so you don't hit everybody, you know, your inflationary increase, which is a good practice, is in July. So we don't put them all in there at once.
Could you put this on a graph?
I haven't. I probably could.
It's like, where's that X-point? You know, like, where did you get that?
Yeah. I will tell you, it is a, it's fluid and it's one that's just got to stay on top of.
So this, if we went with 4E, well, never mind. That wouldn't put that double A at risk.
No, I mean, again, we want to, we want to protect the rating. Here, if you went with the, really, 4D or the 4E, the normal course of practice is, Steve calls me about July and we set an August meeting. And we kind of figure out how the previous year ended.
Okay.
And we use that as a basis. And we revamp the models and we look forward a new 10 years. I mean, the process has worked, I think, pretty well in staying on it.
Well, the truth is, we can't do that many sewer projects in a year, anyway. We can't spend this money.
We...
Well, we could spend the money, point being, we couldn't keep up with the projects as well.
That's one thing I didn't hit on, Mayor.
I was going to say, yeah.
We've modeled about 10 to 12 million a year. And you're right, I mean, that's kind of what your comfort level is with.
I thought we'd have the whole...
Oh, town torn.
...poor it up. So we can't, there's going to be, there's a, there's a point with which we have to figure out, what are we going to be willing to bear in terms of inconvenience plus the speed at which the system is upgraded and maintenance done.
So are we doing D or E?
I think we're doing E.
Okay.
Pause it in the main, Dave, stop.
Yeah. Because there's not much difference between the two. So I was asking, if we put on a graph, where is that point where they intersected and that's the best between those three? I mean, there's not much difference. Go ahead.
In either case, we will have to come before the commission at the November meeting and the December meeting, because the ordinance today says 7.5. So we can change it to zero if you go with 4E. You can change it to 2.5 if you decide to go with 4E. But we will have to move forward with the ordinance, because today it says January 1.
Okay, so we've got three Es. Now, speaking to further, thank you for Planet of the Future. We could, were that changed to where those rate increases, we go ahead and enact that now, and those rate increases will automatically take effect, so we don't have to go back each year and change that. If you're all okay with that?
I think the only thing, Mayor, I would say is, is that given this fluidity of this process, it wouldn't surprise me if they changed again, because I believe this is a little different than what we said a year ago is.
I'm saying what?
I'm saying the way this thing changes a bunch, it wouldn't surprise me that if in a year, it was different than what we're saying right now.
Okay.
I mean, because we've had to revisit it how many times in the last...
Five years.
About eight years.
Okay. So is everyone okay with E then?
I like D, but I'll say E's my second choice.
Okay.
Good second choice.
If we average that out.
E's okay.
Thank you all.
We only needed to give us this one.
Hey, we're there, get into those.
Do you want the old one back?
Thank you.
Oh, we've got notes on the back, but...
These are our blocks, I understand. Actually, it sounds pretty smart.
Well, it's got a little smarter since you've gotten older.
Funny how that happens.
Wisdom comes with age.
I'm not giving that.
Sanitary sewer operation summary. You want to make that or just get it, just message it to us and we'll read it? If you have questions, we'll answer them.
I just wanted to comment that I think, thought that that was really a great literature that you had.
I second that. This is excellent.
That was really good. I loved the last page where you explained all the acronyms and everything. It was, it was...
Well, I thought you did it, Bill. I was giving it too much credit.
I kind of needed this when we was having our forms, because, you know, it explains it so much better than I tried to.
You did.
But they didn't know, though.
People didn't know.
They're glad to.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I got, I know it's a shock, but I've got a couple of questions. I guess my first thing is, could we, could we get this maybe in a little bit different format, but if we could get this annually, you know, kind of like an update to this degree, I think this is excellent. The, on page, the last page, eight, I like the completed projects, I like the projects in process. Do we have a list of projects we are going to do? We're working on.
I figured that. In other words, the ones we still need to do to meet the judgment and all that stuff. So we get that sometime whenever done.
All up to here is you have Wookerson Boulevard on hold. And we just did a big thing on Wookerson, so that's something different.
Further down.
Okay.
Different project, different location.
Good job.
The reason they did Wookerson is because the street was already torn up, so they just took advantage of the timing of being able to get into, do the infrastructure change.
This is a lot closer to the river.
Okay. The, what's our timeline, Bill, on the getting a deputy director?
We are due next week. I think it's next week. I'm sure. Interviews are next week for deputy director, correct? Is it next week? I believe it is.
Yes, Tuesday and Wednesday.
On the long-term control plan that was submitted June 2009, and we're still waiting for comments, you always ask that question. I know we just keep doing what we're doing. Do we have any sense when we're going to get approved? If ever? So one we submitted in June 2009?
We were fairly confident that we were going to get an approval this year, earlier this year. I'm not obviously as optimistic now. It's kind of like our permit. We were kind of given the impression that we'd have our permit approved before the end of September. And it is now November, and we still don't have an approved permit. So, you know, I honestly, I don't know.
So it's sort of the same place that capacity management, operations, and maintenance thing is?
No, that we have got an approval letter on.
Wow.
You won't like the answer, but, because now we've got to start doing the stuff we said we were going to do.
Okay. You're right, I don't. What, on the, on the timeline, where it's got, we get 10 years and then you get eight years on the sanitary sewer overflows, and I think you're trying to get the same timeline on all those, so that we can get an extension. How is all that looking and are we going to be able to meet it?
We feel very good about meeting the SSO deadline by next year. We believe we will have them all eliminated on paper, although they may not be eliminated from a regulatory standpoint. And that's just a timing issue. To be officially eliminated, we have to go two years without an overflow. So we believe they will be eliminated, but the Division of Water will officially agree with that until we've gone two years without an overflow. So, yeah, we feel very good about that. On the, on the long-term control plan, that's the one that we're still very uncomfortable with in getting that done in two years.
That's 2018, right?
Well, right now, it's basically 2017.
And we're trying to get that the same as the 2022 or 2023?
That's correct.
And what, how long, how, when are we going to know if it's going to be that way?
We've submitted the letter to the EPA.
How long ago have we submitted?
It was earlier this year or something. It was earlier this year, I couldn't give you the exact date, but, you know, feds move at their own pace.
I guess my last question is, what do we need to be worried about?
Probably what?
I don't know, but I figured, I'm always nervous about this topic because of the magnitude of money and the federal and state regulatory power. So what is, what's something unseen that we don't know about that we should, we may need to be worried about? And I'm all right with nothing, but...
At the present time, I'm not aware of anything. You know, we feel comfortable with the progress we're making. And the last conversations we've had with the Division of Water, they're very happy with the progress that we're making. So right now, my answer is, I'm not really worried about anything other than continuing doing what we're doing.
And we'll continue to notify the community of road closure, future projects.
Absolutely. And we do have a neighborhood meeting every time we go into a neighborhood to make sure at least the residents are invited to it. Unfortunately, the attendance is usually pretty low, but we try to make sure everybody knows what we're doing. We're still working very closely with public works, trying to coordinate as much work as we can with them as far as dealing with stormwater issues. That's an ongoing effort on our part also to try to minimize the impact on residents. We believe Crestwood's really our first big example of that, and I think it's gone very well. Would you agree with that, Tom?
Yes, sir.
We've had a few hiccups, but it's gone very well otherwise.
Great. Thank you. Next item would be nepotism.
I'll give a brief explanation. As the commission knows, the staff has been working on this. I'd like to thank the directors for their time. We met a couple of different times in trying to come up with a policy that best fits our organization. In a nutshell, the policy clarifications are that immediate family members can be hired in separate departments as long as both departments do not work closely together. A good example would be HR and finance. Immediate family members cannot be hired within the same department. Seasonal and part-time family members are not included in the policy as long as there is no supervisor, subordinate relationship. The city manager and the department director can recommend exceptions to the policy. Finally, family members, it's the same that was included in the current nepotism policy. That would include elected officials, employees, spouses, parents, stepparent, child, stepchild, step-in, or brother-in-law, et cetera, et cetera. So we use the same policy.
Can you ask a question?
Sure.
Why did you put this section in there about department heads or manager can recommend exception to?
There may be occasions, and this was discussed at length in our meetings, there may be occasions where the best person for the job in terms of proximity, in terms of skillset, in terms of overall value to the department, they may be the best person for the position. So after careful scrutiny and review, the fire chief, or the police chief, or the finance director, and myself could make a recommendation to the commission that this is the best person for the job.
I guess the only, I'm not saying that's the wrong thing to do. I'm just having a thought that what is the best person for the job? The best person for the job could be not recommended. I guess I'm just wondering why we want an exception there. But, you know, it's just a question.
It was, it was discussed at length. And it just went back and forth, back and forth. And I think when we reviewed all the issues, we felt exceptions could be recommended to the commission. Ultimately, the commission will make that decision. It'll make the hire or not.
Well, I guess, like, that would cover us in case somebody was not hired, or, well...
You know, it could be we need a nuclear physicist, and it's only special we can hire is the daughter of...
That's a good point. That's a good point.
I think that's what... But no, I think your point's a good one.
And you know, in a town like this, this size, it seems like everybody's kind of related to everybody by blood or marriage or something. Not everybody, but a lot of people are. If you've been here for generations, but, you know what I'm talking about? So, I don't know. I'm not, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with it, I've just had a question.
I have the same one.
I think Debbie Field's going to answer that.
You had asked what an exception was written. When the policy was first drafted, that did not exist. As the city manager mentioned, that was added after deliberation because there was concern that, not a nuclear physicist, but there was concern that there could be a specific, particular skillset, say wastewater treatment, that's a specialized field, there aren't always a lot of candidates. So we have two or three candidates, a very small pool, and by far, the most skilled, qualified person is a family member. That's the reason that that was included, because we could have a very narrow candidate pool, and we wouldn't want to choose a low-level candidate...
Right.
...who's not related. In general, though, if we have a candidate for, we should not be hiring the family members based on the policy.
So the rest of the policy is just lessening the chances of problems related to that. But basically, what the policy is saying is that we want to lessen the chances of any problems occurring because of relationship, that there might be a situation where we absolutely have no choice, but we're going to avoid all the other situations.
Yes.
But I don't, I don't think it avoids the other situations, because as long as you have family members being hired, there can still be the situations. So my preference would be to just not have family members, period. But I know that you all, you know, did all of them. So, I mean, I guess, I can, I just don't think that the proposed policy addresses the issue that you're trying to avoid.
In my opinion, it moves us forward. It doesn't eliminate the total possibility, because it does allow exceptions. And it does allow departments that don't work together. But it is stricter than the current policy. It is moving us in the right direction.
So that exception can initiate at the department head level? And then you would either rubber stamp it or say no?
Yes.
And where it could initiate, no, would have to initiate there, never mind, dumb question, let's get it out.
So would it be initiated on the front end or the back end? I mean, at the front end of, okay, this is, you know, we're taking applications and we see that we haven't gotten...
see that we haven't gotten the applicants?
If I could, on the application, it will, it does have a line today. Do you have an immediate family member working for the city? So, it won't eliminate a person at that point. Anybody can apply for our positions. We want to make that clear, anybody can apply, but we also want to make clear that there is a nepotism policy. So, we will know from the very beginning that there may be an immediate family member relationship.
So, what...
Oh, go ahead.
I think you just answered my question. I had two questions, I think you just answered it. The one I wrote in there, what stops a person from interviewing, it just said if it's on the application, that would be a red flag that goes up. I have two, first of all, I want to thank everybody that worked with you. You did a very good job on this policy, and it didn't, I didn't even have a hiccup at all until I got to number 10, and it's because it looked like it was wrestling, you know, because I was okay with just, the first time it said the city manager reserves the right to exercise appropriate managerial judgment, it takes such actions all the way to get the policy, and I was okay with it going skipping all the way down to the last two things, that said a recommendation from the director and city manager to hire employee family members would be required, and et cetera. And that part in the middle, I didn't know if that was just cut and pasted from somewhere, it just looked like we were saying the same thing different ways. So, that's what kind of, I was reading, it was going smooth, then I got to furthermore, the city manager has authority to make, it just seems different than this right here.
So, you delete furthermore, the sentence of furthermore?
Yeah, I actually agree, I think that could be deleted. This section originally didn't exist at all through staff meeting, it was added and it was larger, and so, there was a section that gave some specific examples of where exceptions may be necessary, such as specialized field, and then they scratched the examples, and really, when those examples were scratched, we could have gone ahead and just scratched that line. So, I, I think that's...
So, is it number 11 just replicating number 10?
The sentence furthermore, the city manager has authority to make exceptions can be...
Deleted?
Yes. At one time, there was a lot more garbage in that section.
I have a better question. Can I ask you, Rob, what do you think? Oh, you ran those conversations. Someplace it says it's not retroactive, I think. So, does that also mean that, like, with current people working in the same department, that it won't be, because it gives you the authority to transfer people if it... You know, so you wouldn't transfer people that are already in a department?
Correct. The policy, once it's effective, will affect future employees, not existing, unless a new relationship develops.
I'm trying to be a gentleman. No, let's walk the moment. So, where are we?
I'm in. I know it's not a vote, but we need to know whether to put it on the...
It's written as an order.
Did we get any feedback or anything from the ethics?
Should I get a piece of...
No.
Just had it on the desk.
Furthermore, I would like to get some info from it.
Is it on the order?
I don't believe they've met since we've discussed this.
No.
They have another issue that they need to discuss as well on a potential amendment to an ordinance, so I think they'll meet, what, do you think, within the next six weeks?
Oh, I doubt, I doubt we can get them together, really.
And the ethics ordinance will have to be amended to...
Oh, several times.
To fit this law.
That's why I wanted to say I want to get that in, because we currently, just for the people that don't, we currently have an ordinance that addresses nepotism and, or ethics ordinance.
Well, I'm with the mayor, if that can be done in a timely fashion. If it can't, then I'm foregoing on.
Can you send a request? Your view of...
And what would you like?
Just ask if they can review it, can give you something, either in writing, I guess in writing, if that's not asking too much.
I don't know if we could get them together, I mean, they could maybe come in eventually.
That might be easier to set than downside.
I just, here's, here's one little concern I have, just to sort of top, I guess, like, I would worry about, maybe I would not worry, there's a possibility I would worry about people accusing you of hiring, like, your favorite people or something. Not that you would do that, but I can see where somebody might start making those allegations with this, and I wouldn't want that to happen.
Fair enough. Since I'm the one who's been pushing for this, and you don't think you'll find that I'm going to be, other than strong recommendations from our directors, two, ultimately, it's the commission that will vote. So, if I make a recommendation, we certainly...
Okay.
So, are we, let me, help me here, mayor. So, are we all on board pending comments from the ethics? Or generally, we're on board pending comments from the ethics committee? Is that where we are?
I do have some of the same concerns that Commissioner Bowers raised.
And mayor, I think we do need to make sure that the nepotism order is consistent with the nepotism language of the ordinance, just to avoid conflict.
Is it?
Not right now.
It's not, no?
Not right now. It's more stringent, just because the nepotism ordinance doesn't discuss working in the same department. So, we'll make every effort to contact the...
Okay, so, let's pretend we got a situation where a department head recommends a relative, then it comes to the city manager, and then at that point, are you going to go in and do some, like, investigation according to the other applications to make sure that there's not favoritism going on at that level? In other words, I don't want to get into another, I don't want to get into a situation where, well, just what Commissioner Hale said, we're not really addressing what we think we're, I just, I want to be...
I would ask the director to provide the justification for hiring immediate family.
It's less likely to happen now.
Well, yeah, that's true. You're just leaving yourself an out, just in case.
So, will we send a request to the chairman of the ethics committee, the board?
I'll send it, yes, a request to each member.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, next item, reorganization.
It, reorganization. Good, let's talk about it.
This is a project we've been working on for probably about three and a half, four years within the organization. A lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of research for them, but the proposal before the commission this evening is to change our current organization from IT director, a GIS specialist, and a desktop technician, to a assignment for a project manager for a period of six to 12 months, an IT manager which would have to be approved by the commission through ordinance, because it's not a job description today, a desktop technician, and then contracting for our network engineering, network administration, disaster recovery, and system security. So, that this organization is okay with the commission, then we will begin the process, we will adopt the manager position, beginning at the next voting meeting in November, we'll take two readings, and then the process to hire the IT manager will begin, and we'll be looking internal initially, but that's our goal, is to look internal.
And then the IT manager would hire the desktop technician?
That's correct. The IT manager, HR, and probably the temporarily assigned project manager as well.
So, I think you had mentioned previously that there's a possibility, well, that at least one position will be cut currently in the department. So, I wondered how the rest of you all felt about offering some type of severance program pay to anyone that loses their job because of the reorganization.
I think I probably would have talked to, I'm in agreeance, we could do something, but I would have talked to HR. Are you asking that we set a precedence of...
Well, wouldn't it have to be approved by...
Yeah, it would be written up. I just want to make sure I understood your question.
I think, I think we would need to see what type of pay with leave that employees impacted by this would get anyway. I think it's, I think it's dangerous to set a precedent for something beyond what the city normally does, because, you know, there, this type of thing, although doesn't happen a lot, it has happened several times in various different situations since I've been on here, and I'm sure with the others that have been there longer, it's been even more. So, I'd be fearful of coming up with something that would then be utilized in the future, but I do, I do think we could also find out, you know, what, find out what the numbers are for the respective people.
Talked with Kathy earlier, you want to strip her down?
Sure.
The difficulty is not knowing yet, oh, come on. We discussed that one job would be eliminated, but I guess I might report a group lead on the three numbers, because we don't know exactly how...
You can't do that.
Yeah, so, it's difficult.
And Rob's shaking his head no.
We'll be sorry, but I guess I'm feeling it would be difficult for me to respond.
So, tonight, we...
You would have to go into closed session to discuss that issue.
Right. So, tonight, we're just looking at, there's no, the plan here that looks fine, since we've been working on it for a long time, and down here, which is pretty much a recap of what you...
Should we be going into closed session anyway?
We, I've got a request that we go into closed session to address litigation issues.
So, we can talk about this there?
So, if you want to include personnel...
You just need to state that in the motion.
Then it would be stated in motion, and you could discuss that at that time.
Well, I think we should, because, you know, we have three people in that department right now, and so, those three people's identities are known. Right, so, I think we need to go into closed session, we're going to talk about, I just, it's a weird conversation to be in.
You do need to go into closed session to discuss that. That would be my recommendation.
So, whenever someone makes a motion...
Make the motion.
Oh, you want to do it right now? Okay, a move, we go into closed session to discuss litigation and personnel. Are we not going to finish the agenda first? Okay, we'll just go into closed session. That's my motion.
You want to finish the agenda first, though?
Well, I was wondering what you all want to do.
Yeah, let's finish the agenda motion. You want to withdraw, withdraw the motion.
Okay, I do want to withdraw, because I want to do everything else first.
But when you do make a motion, 61, 10, sub 1, sub F.
61.
Point 810.
Point 810.
Sub 1.
Subsection 1, subsection...
Subsection 1, is it B? Subsection F.
B and F.
And C and F.
C and F.
C and F, Charlie, Fox Trot.
61.81, oh, subsection 1, sub...
C and F. One week, one year.
Yeah, I was just trying to add that. You're going to do sub C for...
With the guy for 10 years, maybe I'll get that right.
No, it's, you know, working, it's got to work.
I just don't like using numbers, that's what he's worth.
We just have to tally it up in case we get sued, that's all.
That's right, you're right.
That's everything you have to do. If everybody would weigh that, we wouldn't have to do anything. Okay, next item. Does anything on the agenda that...
Hardly changed. What? What'd you say?
He said it changed.
We'll go to staff.
Finding director of unit. Studio director, south. Nothing.
Community relations. Police chief?
Yes, please. I'm sorry, we need to change your attire. I'd like to, I guess, ask, if I'm doing this wrong, please stop me out. It's the first time I've done an official staff, being the new guy, so, since yesterday. I'd like to ask for permission to put on the agenda for the commission to consider a 12-hour shift proposal that we're trying to do within the police department. One of the, one of the things that we put out to officers, based on the feedback that the city manager and HR director got, was basically, what do you, what do you need, you know, in order to freshen things? And one of the things they said that, you know, just that, that change and that buy-in, so, we've actually put this out to a vote because of the community benefits that come with it. Ninety-five percent of the police department has said that they are in support of this. Now, that's important, because there's a law, KRS 95.495, says that police can't be made to work other than in an emergency situation, more than a regularly scheduled eight-to-10-hour day. However, they can waive that, that KRS. Essentially, there would be an estimated increase in pay because it would require four-hour block of overtime in every pay period for those that were assigned to patrol. Best-case estimate is around $169,000. But we've worked closely with the city manager and have been able to gather his support on it through goal-setting to reduce overtime spending and other expenditures that exist in the current model. I hope that the 12-hour shifts will offset a whole lot of that to the point of roughly 23 percent. But not to get into it too detailed, I can send out this summarization that the city manager has in his possession, and ultimately, the goal is going to be to, with current staffing levels, I should say, current budgeted levels, to increase the patrol coverage upward of 60 percent with the same personnel that we have. So, the cost isn't without its benefits, and as I say, our goals have been set to attempt to offset that all the way down to as low as $5,000, if we can be successful in the areas that we hope to be. Sir?
Chief, the, what's your timeline on this?
We would like to be able to do it January 1, because our shifts are rebid, and they take effect, well, I say January 1, it would be the first, beginning of the first pay period in January.
I ask that because I would, I don't know what the rest of the commission feels, but I would want to get the report and then talk about it at the December work session, only because this is a pretty, could be a great thing, by the way, but this is a pretty big thing. I think it's a pretty significant change, and I'd want to study it and ask, you know, maybe ask a bunch of questions, and then talk about it, and, but, I guess my next question was, if we discuss the December work session, decide it's bad and we don't do it, or if we decide it's great and we do do it, can we have things prepared in time for you to meet your deadline of January?
We could, really, the only thing that makes it difficult is, in order for this to work, the continued, the ongoing daily overtime and that type of thing needs to be minimized as much as possible. Right now, in November, late November and early, or late October and early November, we usually rebid shifts, so currently, we're under three-eighths model, we have three shifts, eight-hour shifts. So, we restructure that because the training, the in-service and that, the schools are actually announced in November, has, has the list come out yet?
It's been in November.
Okay, so, the in-service, the required in-services for officers is released around now, and in order to plan to offset and make sure that we don't have manpower shortages and overlap training, and also, to make sure that we're able to get the quality of training that, the earlier you put in, it's only limited number of spaces.
I guess my, my concern is, this is going to take two readings, my guess.
No, sir, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an ordinance. The reason that we're seeking mission report, I guess essentially, is because of the very real possibility that if something catastrophic were to happen, I don't want to lie inside the commission with a $169,000 bill, although, I'm concerned, y'all jump through hoops and do everything I can. y'all jump through hoops and do everything I can to make this successful.
So, we can talk about it in the work session, still have it ready to roll in January if this is the way we win?
The question I have is where is the, the order or requirement that says only two shifts right now? I'm not aware of it being in the ordinance, but I'm just.
Only two shifts? Did I misspeak? We have versus.
Okay, but you wanna have a twelve-hour shift. I'm sorry, where does it indicate, uh, eight-hour shift versus?
That's in, that's in KRS. It's KRS ninety-five point four-nine-five.
But, do we have an order or something that says?
No, no, and I think that, other than the fact that there's the potential for the budgetary impact, I think that the city manager and I could, could, if we wanted to put the police department on ten-hour shifts, it would, you, I'm sure you all would be indifferent because it wouldn't necessarily have the same potential budgetary impact.
So, we would have to amend the budget perhaps, which takes two readings.
I don't, I don't think you, no, I don't think so. It, it wouldn't. In fact, I feel extremely confident that the savings we've got just from manpower, for positions that have been built.
We've got sufficient.
I don't believe it would be a budget buster, even if we didn't do the things that, that I'm gonna illustrate to you in this, in this document that, that we're gonna send out. I honestly don't think it would take a budget amendment, but if it were to, I certainly don't want you to be blindsided by it. That's why we wanted to bring it to your attention and, and put that out there. And again, I mean, there's no reason that we can't do a lot of these offsets that I proposed as far as decreasing twenty-three percent essentially in the budget or in the overtime that we spent, and I, I just used two thousand thirteen because that was the only full year of that I had available.
So, Rob, can we, can we discuss it at the work session in December and make a decision?
I think we can. The question, based on what the chief says, is that if they've got enough money in their departmental budget, then perhaps a budget amendment is not necessary. If we do have to do a budget, an amendment to the budget, of course, that's two readings. And then the other thing is, I'd like to talk to the chief about, not right now, but in the next several days, is whether there are SOPs specify an eight-hour shift and whether we need to change anything in the SOP, which of course is not by ordinance anyway.
So, you can get us the, the proposal and then we can discuss it if the work session in December and still be fine, one way or the other.
I, I think so. It, it may cause, we would have to repunt because we're gonna have to move forward right now with planning for the beginning of January for the shift changes. So, we're either gonna have to move forward with that planning as if we were going to twelve hours or as if we're gonna stay as we are now with three eight-hour shifts. Now, we could, we could repunt and, and flip around and do a bid and get it in place and have everyone ready to go January first if we were to stay on the eight-hour shifts. But, i- if it's, if the commission wouldn't oppose, and I, I don't know that it would hurt anything. The only thing it would be is if we do it, the planning with the eight-hour or twelve-hour shift bids and we have to schedule our training for all of next year and then we, and then we go back today.
Couldn't we discuss it under old business at the, at the voting meeting in November and make a, and make a determination there? That would give us, that'd give us two weeks to study it and get questions from you guys so that we know more.
You could do that if the commission wants to, certainly.
I just, you know, me, I just can't, I'm not gonna say yes to something that's probably, that's gonna cost money unless I've got a lot of.
Absolutely, I understand and I wouldn't expect anyone to. Again, that being said, I think this is gonna be a great thing for the community. I think it's gonna give us a lot of opportunity to do some proactive things and some CLP-level things and I hope to offset that one sixty-nine all the way down to five thousand. Now.
And I get it to zero.
Well.
You can do it.
I was gonna ask, ask you if I could borrow twenty-five-hundred and then I could just, I wouldn't have to.
Well, you know, I probably would loan you. I'm, I'm confident enough in your ability that you're gonna, can get it to zero.
Well, I appreciate that. We're gonna give it, give our absolute best effort.
That'll be the questions I'll be asking.
I can imagine. I'm ready for them.
Yeah, I just have a dumb question. You said ninety-five percent of the officers are in favor of it.
Uh-uh.
Uh, and maybe it's my misperception, I think of policing as being a, a high-stress job. So, being on-call for twelve hours as opposed to eight hours, are they gonna be as effective that way? I mean, or stressed out?
You know, that's one thing about this is, it is a good question and I think we have a pretty good design right now to where they're not gonna be working so many days in a row that it's gonna be, and I'd be more than happy to show you how all that lays out. But, that is one of the things, that there are some unknowns, you know? The unknowns are, I may be able to reduce our overall spending and overtime by twenty-three percent based on the current model. I may be able to do it by ninety, I don't know. I won't know until I do it, you know, until we actually live it and we've gone through vacations and schools and.
So, you see this as a pilot project, not as an.
Exactly, for this, for this one year, this would be essentially a pilot project to see how it works and find out what those unknowns are. One of those unknowns may be their effectiveness or their tiredness or, you know, something to that effect. Also, it's important to keep in mind that if we see two months into this thing that everybody's, you know, the, the production's down, it's not what we thought it was gonna be and they're, we'll pull the plug on it and we'll go back to eight hours and we'll just deal with the schools as best we can.
Well, I, I'd love to see the CLP program going again. Uh, I was, I always forget what Bill Riley used to call me when I was the chairperson of the advisory committee, so, but it was a great program and they did great stuff.
Right.
So, it'd be wonderful if y'all could get that going.
And that's exactly what we, I'm hoping we can build in with this.
I think the sooner you can get us the proposal with everything with the kitchen sink in it, the better.
Okay.
And I'm okay, I'm okay with your proposal, one question, you got ninety-five percent that wanted, that five percent, do they have the option?
They, they do, they have the option and that option is probably gonna be one option, which will be ten hours to offset that, but, but, you know, with ninety-five percent of the officers agreeing to the waiver, which is if you all approve this thing, I'll have to work with Rob to get a, a defensible waiver to, to have all the officers that are gonna work twelve hours. But, uh, yes, we will, to answer your question, and then we've got, and I think we're sitting on five vacancies right now, so, it'll be a little short starting out, but as you'll see in this, this is, that's some stuff we work out. And I think that, I hope that you can, can make it through there without too much trouble. Just one thing, I'll let you know, and both majors are very well versed on this and that's why they're here. They've worked, we've all three worked really closely trying to make this thing something that could work. But, I'm technically on vacation right now, so I came back into that, so, the rest.
You're never on vacation.
Right, right. But, I'll send that out, but they, they are, will be more than happy and available to answering questions as quick as anyone wants to. Yes, ma'am.
First question, this may help to address Commissioner Hale's question about fatigue, tiredness and a twelve-hour shift. Well, it would be highlighted in City of Frankfurt. It's not a new or novel concept. This has been, other municipalities do this and so that's what brought the idea to Frankfurt. Is that?
Actually, Ashland and Newport are the two that we've kind of been talking with and, and they love it, you know, they love it and it works gracefully and so. But, we'll, we'll absolutely do our best.
So, they would go from three eight-hours to three twelve-hours?
No.
That must be a new date.
Two twelve-hours.
They would go to two twelve-hours.
Uh-huh.
Where did you get the extra four hours?
Well, I'll have to show you. I'll, I'll include a copy of the schedule.
I'm still right. Eight times three is twenty-four, right? Two times twelve is still twenty-four?
It's, I could sit here and try to explain, but with that visualizing and seeing it on paper, it'd be hard for you to get the concept.
All right, well, that's fine. I'll look at it when you get it on there. I've been sitting here questioning, what if this doesn't add up? Doesn't multiply, okay.
And we're gonna.
So, they would, would they, I'm sorry, would they, um, would they, I guess, well, I should just wait till I see the proposal.
December's a good time.
I mean, would they be twelve on, then twelve off, and twelve back on, or would they be spaced out?
Roughly, it's, it's, they work three days.
Okay.
They're off three days.
Okay.
And they work four and then they're off three.
Okay.
And it's got some, some built-in benefits, but again, I think the majority of the, of the reason is, is just, it would, it would improve our, our abilities and efforts to direct the community-oriented.
So, we're gonna get them to sign?
Yes, and it would be good for one year on their side. If it's not working for us financially, physically, or efficiency, we pull the plug on it.
If someone wants to opt out after two months?
No, 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 they're in, they're all in for a year if it's working. They would, they're gonna have to sign a waiver for a year because we can't just be juggling around, you know?
The thing, I guess I'm concerned about reading the statute where it looks like if someone didn't want to, if they changed their mind, we cannot necessarily force them to. That was the only question I, I was gonna.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll double-check and, and be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
So, this will be old business on, in November, okay.
It would be on the work session?
No, old business November voting.
That way we can get it a little quicker.
Thank you.
Well, thank you guys.
Park and Lake?
You've seen most everything, the update that we've got going on. If anybody's got any questions, just a reminder, tomorrow we'll be setting up for Veterans Day at the Palmer's Market Ceremony at eleven o'clock.
Oh, thanks for doing a great job on the museum.
Yeah, thank you all for coming. It came down to our tenth anniversary, dude, even with the bad weather, we had, had over two-hundred people in, so, it was very successful.
Mike, Mr. Director?
Uh, yes, city manager. We'd like to suggest to have a goals and objectives meeting, similar to what we did last year, where, where you folks, maybe take a look at the goals and objectives we got in place right now and then maybe make some more suggestions or takeaways to what we have. We'd like to suggest maybe, I don't know what your schedules are like, but maybe November twenty-fourth, maybe an hour before, uh, you know, maybe three-thirty or four o'clock.
Is this for planning or is this for everything?
This is for, it's basically getting commissioned, uh, for goals and objectives. And, and what we're gonna do is build, we're gonna build off of last year's, as a starting point, the goals and objectives we got in place currently. So, I'll pass those goals and objectives out, you guys can kinda look at them and, and then we can have a formalized meeting, discuss those and.
So, the twenty-fourth, like three o'clock maybe?
Yeah, it's three, three-thirty. I don't know, like I say, I don't hear all schedules, but it's part of our budget planning process.
Well, if we do that, we need to make sure that Commissioner Lex Sowers can be here too for that because it'd be important for his, to have his input. Not that one person would change anything, you know?
Good, good.
What time are you thinking, right?
Three-thirty.
You think it's three-thirty?
Okay.
I get a little late. Make sure. Make it a quick.
Yeah, we're not starting from scratch, you know, you'll have last year's. I'll, I'll send those out early so you can be looking at them.
Look forward to it. Thank you. HR?
I have a couple items. One is just to request to add a signature item to the agenda. This is a labor worker's compensation recertification. It is not a financial item. It's rather just registering the City of Frankfurt with Department of Labor as an organization that carries self-funded workers' comp coverage, if I don't commission.
Without objection.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's good. It's not like an attorney.
The other item I have is last week we received notifications that Kentucky Deferred Comp will no longer accept employer contributions to employees' accounts. The timing is really about as bad as it could be for us because we're in the midst of open enrollment. Uh, I will be seeking suggestions for how we can not reduce the benefits that we have provided to employees. The Kentucky Deferred Comp did not make this decision, they were basically acting on behalf of, or acting to be compliant with new IRS regulation and it's trickled affect us and minimizes what we have been giving to employees.
Starting next month?
No, it'll start January first, twenty-fifteen. They will, they won't accept those employer contributions that we've been making for employees with one or more year of service for those employees that have waived medical. So, I want you to be aware, it's kinda late breaking news, I don't.
Okay, so, they won't be doing employee contributions?
Employer.
Employer.
They will continue to receive employee contributions.
Okay.
But, the City of Frankfurt did make some employer contributions for employees with one or more year of service and then for employees who waived medical, they previously had an option to send those funds to an HRA or to deferred comp.
Okay.
We're just allowing it to go to an HRA.
So, do we need to do something to, like, do we need to put something, like a replacement something in place or do we need to just forget it?
I would like to put some type of replacement in place, just to find a way.
So, we only have two months left to do that? Well, really not two months.
Right.
Okay. Well, so, are you gonna like give us a recommendation, Commissioner?
That's my plan. I still have to put something together in terms of what the possibilities might be.
Would that, that would take an ordinance or an order? What would that take? A replacement?
A recommendation that I would, I would offer, but I don't think, Rob, I'll let you jump in and respond, would be to replace those deferred comp contributions with a lump sum one-time payout. For those employees that haven't waived medical, they range from eighty dollars annually to maybe just over three-hundred dollars annually.
And you wanna bring this to us when?
December work session? But, my question is, my question is, is that something, Rob, that we, is it, is that an order?
It depends what you do.
Okay.
You're going to.
Like if what she just said.
Yeah, in the past, we've always taken the position that you cannot give a bonus.
Oh.
I'd have to go back to look at my, uh, legal analysis that explains why, but you can't do it.
Maybe flex dollars.
Maybe drop some in the hallway so I fix it up.
On that, I think we'll move on. Public Works Director?
I have four things, I'll try to be quick. I know you guys get sore over there. First thing is just an update on the Butterberg Hill, Payne Street's going up the hill. We had some concerns with the condition of the pavement and it looks like the road needs some stabilization, so we have hired an engineer to begin that plan on that. I'm also gonna ask him to look at if we did steps, could we build them to meet current code? I have doubts that we could, but I'd like for him to, to look at and see, and if it is possible, is it even economically possible? I know we, we've talked about some other options for that and are continuing to have those conversations about how to, how to relieve that situation. And, it may mean that we just need to have a, a sit-down with, with the county and, and the school and kinda figure out what we need to do there. The next item is something I'd like to just bring up to y'all and get your blessing on. In the Tirol Landa subdivision on Arbolahto, there is a pipe that needs to be replaced. It is a corrugated metal pipe that's been in there since the subdivision was developed. The bottom is rusting out of it. That tipper pipe is too small for the flows that come to it during rainfall events. It causes flooding in the adjacent upstream home. In the past, they've looked at increasing that pipe size and they've gotten a lot of responses from the community downstream. And, it's my intent to, to hire an engineer to, to look at what effect, if any, a larger pipe size would have on the downstream property yard so we can kinda put actual numbers to it.
Trying to think of.
This has been going on for a while, so.
Nineteen-seventy-six?
Okay.
Move forward on that because it's been on there for a while.
It runs down the backyard of, like, okay, I know which I've got.
Yeah, okay. Uh, the last two items is just a couple things I'd like to have permission to add to the agenda. One is the landfill extension, landfill contract extension. The current contract is up at the end of the year. It, uh, the contract has language that allows us to extend it for another five-year period with the price agreed upon by, by both parties. Rob, the city attorney has looked at it. I met, actually got to meet today with Representative from, from Republic, so I'd like to, to put that on the agenda for approval at, at this month's meeting. And the last thing is I'd also like to add a, a lease to own for an asphalt emulsion tank, which is, to describe it is, we have a, a street repair machine, piece of equipment that's on the agenda for this month, but we also need a tank to hold the emulsion and I'd just like to add that to the agenda.
And that would help us repair the street?
Absolutely.
If there's no objection to that, then everybody's good. What that lets you do is like do the hot asphalt repair.
It actually allows us to repair all winter, and they're starting to use this machine. They're doing a demo on Home Street starting Wednesday. So, we'll get to see this thing in action, one similar to what we're bidding.
Great.
We're about to halt you there.
Right there between Collins, where they did that storm line renewal, and, yeah, from Mark's.
Anything about the city?
No, it's actually state road.
Okay, that's what I was saying.
But, the city project went in there.
And we have to, so we're gonna...
We have to fix it back.
Good. So, that's gonna be, that whole stretch is gonna get...
It's gonna, there's gonna be repairs made to it.
Okay. I got some calls coming in.
I'm sure you have. We've, well, the reason we waited this late in the year was so that we wanted the, the traffic that was diverted from the Oaks and paving project to go back to Oaks, and so we wouldn't have to continue with all the traffic.
You mentioned the landfill extension, and you and Rob, y'all oughta have a dollar figure from that contract, be cheap.
Um, I just met with them today. The, the current contract allowed for a 5% increase each year, and I talked to them today about doing a 3%, 3.5% increase per year. So, it's a less...
I was thinking 1. Better get down, you done, you get good.
Don't please me, either.
Contact his wife.
Anything else?
I do have a question. On the Buttermer Hill, after Commissioner Hale brought that up, I got a lot of calls, so I had mentioned to several of those people that it might be a good idea for the city to sit down with county school board, city school board, Buttermer Hill residents, and I said that we would kinda push for that if the commission would agree to it, that we would have that meeting, because I think that might be a way to solve the problem without us expending a lot of money. And, um, and I just had a thought that I just forgot. But, um, if we could move forward with that, I think that would be good. You know, one of the forums, the South Frankfurt forum, where the questions was, it had to do with the city government working with the school system, so this is definitely a place that we can start. And if they mean business when they ask us those questions, then they should be open to that meeting, because this is a subdivision that, if you look at it in relation to some other subdivisions that are in the city school system, should be in the city school system. And that was the South Frankfurt Association asking us that question, are you going to work with us? So, can we move forward with trying to get that meeting with the school boards and the Buttermer Hill residents? Right now, there's a lot of disagreement up there about what they want done, and if quicker that we bring those entities together, the, the less time it has to escalate, and maybe we can address it without actually expending a lot of money. The school systems can be a part of the reservation.
It's just the county, or the city school.
The thing is, they could probably, if they could probably work out something whereby, if they wanted their children to go, they could arrange some sort of schedule or bus pickup. I, I just think they can work out something, and I think that, um, that's at the root of the problem.
Well, I think if, if you have staff look into that, and maybe explore that with these entities, I'm fine, but I do think there's the potential for a first-class mess, because there's just as many people on the other side that didn't give us a petition, that came down here the day after the petition, and called up various commissioners on the phone.
But, that petition was about an issue that's related to the real issue that they've been concerned about for a long time, and that's the children not having bus pickup.
Right.
And so, if you would bring the school boards together with the city, then we might be able to resolve that problem without going into the steps or the pavement or...
Well, I agree, and I'm fine with it. I do want us to realize, though, first off, if they don't wanna do the pickup, it's their prerogative. And the second thing is, is remember that I, I believe when we're, it's all said and done, you're gonna find that the reason why the county doesn't wanna do the bus pickup is liability insurance.
But, my whole point of the meeting would be...
Right, I'm for it.
That, that the city school system and the county school system might be able to work together to resolve this problem, because they've asked us the question, and it works both ways. If the school systems want us to work with them, then they need to work with the city in resolving some of those problems. Do you see my point?
Yes, ma'am.
So, can we move forward with this?
You wanna find that one in?
The city's school system.
I've lost track of where, where I'm at. I got the four things you said, and then what's that? I'm just missing something, so I'll, I'll just speak to whatever you all said.
I know, I'm not saying it's a great idea. I'm willing to have, to support Commissioner Byers in the exploration. I don't wanna commit to anything, because we're still, at the end of the day, we're still dealing with, how many students are we talking about? Four, six?
I don't know. To me, the, the bigger question is having safe, what is the correct term?
Egress and egress? Egress.
Off and on the hill, because I, I think you have given me, I've got it here in my little folder, there have been, like, 12 times that Taylor Avenue has been closed because of flooding.
Yes, ma'am.
And, so, if Taylor Avenue is closed, and if there's a fire up there, you're not gonna get a fire truck up there.
Oh, you're not.
And, so, to me, the bigger issue, besides the however many school kids there are, is having more than just that one entrance to Buttermer Hill.
But, you know, and, and you're exactly right, but, and I'm glad I'm, we don't have to deal with this kinda issue very much, because it's hard to figure out. But, people have chosen to live 500 places in Frankfurt or Franklin County that aren't accessible, whether it be flood or by bad weather, and they've made the choice to live there knowing that they won't be accessible. You know, there are various places, you know, that you just can't get to because of the weather, because of flooding, happens all the time, and so, this is a hard issue. And I, I think we just have to take a hard look at what the cost is, and like I said, a lot of this isn't really us, as far as if you're looking for a permit solution, as far as the county.
But, it's a great opportunity to ask, to work with them.
It's a good opportunity for all the entities to sit down together and, as a community, work on a problem that affects us all, and I think, I think that's the way we need to start approaching our problems in the city, is not just the people here in this room, but the people that are all involved in the issue. If we sit down together, we can come up probably with a much better plan than we can just talking at this table with this one little group.
That's for sure.
But, um, but I told them I would put it out there and try, so...
You got it. There's enough...
Okay, and then, oh, we're not...
There's three right there. One, two, three. Be there.
Yeah.
The one thing I wanted to say is, this really needed to add on to the agenda, but I had an emergency in my family this past Friday, and the EMTs responded, and it was like the cavalry coming over the top of the hill.
That's good.
And I wanted to thank them. They did an outstanding job, and we really appreciate it.
Sorry for your emergency.
Their wives. I'll have a piece of, oh, I'm sorry. No, 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 who went first?
No, I don't have any.
I've got a number of them, so if you wanna go first, Commissioner Byers, you just go right ahead.
Mine's just another street issue. I think it's, it's new for this term, but it's, it's a recurring issue, like, from terms back, and I thought that they were gonna come and talk to us, but they didn't, but it's the Douglas Avenue right alongside of campus. The people that live there have, in years past, and several of them recently have said to me, can we please, 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 get the speed limit reduced here? And there are children that play in those front lines, and the traffic is doing much faster than the speed limit. And, and so, Mr. Suson, I think I talked with you about this earlier. Did we find out if it's possible to reduce it down to 10 or 15 miles an hour? Do we know?
I thought I passed that on to...
I'm sorry, I, I can hardly hear what you're...
Question on Douglas Avenue as it approaches East Main in the Leedland.
You did pass it on, and we, we had to do our increased patrols, and I think there's been some speed enforcement out there, but I'd be more happy to sit down with the traffic committee, and we can discuss what, what we can do with ours.
Well, we're not there, we're not asking...
And they're gonna do a substantial amount of work here in the near future, because they're completely changing that intersection, so you might wanna wait till after the intersection work is completed before you take a look at the...
Well, I mean, they're asking that the speed limit be reduced down to, like, 15 miles an hour. There's a lot of student traffic coming in and out of there, and then people going through the residential, and they were wondering if it's possible to have a 15 mile an hour zone there.
Between the exit, uh...
Between East, between East Main Street and that little strip that runs up East Main Street back to the houses and apartments.
I, I think that's, Mr. Moore, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the traffic committee could recommend that if necessary, and it could be, it could be changed.
It's a little dangerous to be doing 25 miles through there.
Do you wanna add something, man? Oh, yeah, yeah. We, we could do, we, we have a JMAR traffic monitoring system that we can mount to a pole right there, and we can get an idea of how fast people are currently traveling there. So, we could do that, and set in it reports the data around the clock for up to two weeks. It's currently spoken for.
Okay.
It's on read drive right now.
Okay.
Per, per request.
Okay.
I can see...
Oh, yes. I'm going to that now.
So, gathering some data there, but the good thing is, the JMAR will, it prints out a graph, and it can tell us, you know, you're always, you may get someone at 3:00 in the morning, excuse it, but it, it'll work it right down to the hour of the day.
Okay.
We had complaints on Seminole, and what we found was, it was obvious that the rush hour traffic peak in the morning, kids going to school. Really helps us if there is an enforcement issue, that we can narrow it down, and not have to sit there all day and wait for one car to come through, and that's all you get, is one car. We'll get it out there.
Very nice. Thank you.
And then, can you also, like, have that committee look into lowering the limit to 15?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Oaks, be one.
Have one more little one.
Hold on, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I guess I can ask Mr. Z for an update later. I'll just ask you for an update later.
Can I ask Scotty before I go?
No, 'cause you're a lot...
I always have a couple. The money that, if y'all remember, I don't know how long ago it was, Tom may remember, we had a, we had a citizen common with colored pictures and a proposal for bump outs, and in return for doing the bump outs, they were gonna pay us $5,000. And, um, and it was, you know, it was all, like, they initiated the proposal, we, we supported it, and we haven't gotten our money. So, I would, um...
We were wondering if you wanted to discuss that in... Could you put that one on closed session?
On the list already.
Okay, well, moving to the next one. Garbage bills. Where, where are we on that? When's the next? I think you sort of told me a few things, Steve. What's, where, what are we doing next?
Well, I assume we're gonna let those, those letters go beginning of the year after we get past the property tax rush. That's what, that's what Rob and I discussed earlier, I think, from Saint Major, right, Rob?
Right, the, the two sets of letters that are gonna go are the ones to employees that have not paid, and also to the individuals that have higher amounts.
Employees that have paid the rush, that's not standing. Yes, sir.
We have had some inquiries since we've had some, the Art one paper, we've had a lot of folks come in here and inquire. I, I don't know how much we've gathered, but I'd have to, have to see. We have had some inquiries, and some people, we've got to get their faces. You kind of put some teeth in their lips.
I've been, I've had a few comments on people that, oh, I'm sorry, can I go, Mayor?
Go ahead.
That come in to pay their bill, and they're, um, like, short, less, they're, they all like, well, but there's been a lot of attention paid to very, 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 very minor transgressors, conscientious payers, like, under a dollar, but I'll talk to you about it later. I guess it's...
Sure. Okay. Is, um, is FPV under closed session?
Yes.
Okay. Old Y, is that open or closed?
No, that's not.
Okay. Um, I guess we, we asked for, from the commission, asked for a response from the Gray's on that, and I think their response was, is they weren't gonna do that, but wanted to meet with us individually. So, um, I, I would ask city attorney, where are those two? I think there's two things with them. One's the property maintenance code violation, I think, something, another one's the triple tax. Where, where are they? Is there something in the courts?
They have, uh, Old Y LLC...
Yes, sir.
Has appealed the determination that they're subject to the triple tax rate, and no action has been taken to prosecute that, of course, at the direction of the commission. Normally, what would happen where someone files an appeal is that a motion to set a briefing schedule would be filed, and then the briefing schedule would be set, and then the briefs would be filed, and the court would make its decision. So, as soon as the commission is ready for the city to push that, we can, uh, record. That, that comes through the, uh, I think the Board of Code Enforcement, and so that's Ed Logan, and so we would need to contact Ed and have him move it forward.
Well, there's two, there's two, actually, but the first one they appealed is the property maintenance code.
Right, well, I was just talking about the triple tax.
The abandonment is, there's a follower of the property maintenance code, it's, they, they want, there's no adjustments for the night, and they're, so they feel both of the property maintenance code and...
And those are both Ed Logan.
So, what do, what...
So, if we wanted Ed to push it, we just...
So, there's two issues to push, and it's up to the commission whether or not to push. Is that it?
That's correct.
Okay, well, then, then I think this group said that if we didn't get anything, they were for pushing, but I don't know where everybody is. So, I'm for, as you might imagine, I'm for pushing them.
What did you say, December 1st?
Well, I think the last time we met, we talked about them, we said they had it to December 1st, and we was gonna do something else.
You're exactly right, but they were supposed to get a proposal back to us, which they said they're not gonna do.
They did say that?
Yes. They said they were gonna meet with the commissioners individually.
Are we gonna, like, meet with them individually? I think it's a commission issue, not an individual issue.
We must meet with us individually so that we won't do anything.
Didn't that be a violation of what's been called?
I mean, you could, you could talk, if, if they're just talking like any taxpayer, you could certainly just meet with them like you would any other citizen of Frankfurt, but in terms of trying to arrive at a decision, I think you have to do that in a...
Right.
...in a meeting. I, I would recommend that if, if the commission is going to discuss it further with Old Y LLC, that do so in a commission meeting.
When did they, did they, uh, did they actually send something saying they're not gonna do it?
I sent them a reminder that the commission had asked about what their progress had been, and they indicated, this is to re-mail, they indicated that they would prefer to speak with the commission individually. This is my last thing.
But, it's not an individual thing, it's a commission thing. Can you just respond back to them that the commission takes an action as a whole, not as five separate entities, and that we would like, if they have something to say to us, to say it to the board? Does anybody agree with that?
Well, I don't, but I'm happy with it. I don't, because this is, this is the 46th time they've gotten out of doing what the law tells them to do.
Oh, you just don't wanna talk to them at all, period, either way?
No, no, I think, I think it's clear they have no intention of following, of following what the law is, or the regulations are on this thing that Gary's talking about, and what they're doing is playing for time, and they've been playing for time for seven years.
Well, maybe you don't need to do that, Mr. Z.
But, I'm, I'm, but if you all wanna wait and see if they wanna come, I'm fine with that.
No, what would you rather do?
I, I, I'm for proceeding along these two lines.
Is that a briefing schedule to move forward?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you wanted? And just because you have a briefing schedule doesn't preclude them from coming in.
I think the board kinda said, maybe it's to be sent for this kinda bit, so we're already there anyway. I mean, we're right, well...
Two weeks, three. What is it?
They're all on the...
Is there a, okay. Never mind what I said. Never mind what I said.
Um, next item is the airing of grievances. Feet of strength.
Well, I've got a couple of things, but I'm, I'm not sure this is new business, but, uh, I've received in the last few days some excellent information and I don't know why, uh, like public works, they say they finished a project fifteen percent under budget. You know, I mean, that's great news, but that's the kind of stuff we need to be putting out there, you know, and I see it in your report, I saw something, I'm, I'm just surprised that these are the kind of things that sometime we say, we, you know, somebody might say, we're not doing things, we're doing them, but we, you know, we getting a great job on this sewer thing, but, you know, we gotta promote these things and we do well. And I've just, I've seen a couple of other things, I can't find it right now. Can't find the other one, but it should have been another update, but, uh, just every time I look at even, um, now Gary put out some excellent work here at our last, our citizen, that website, where you go in and see, you know, we've been briefed on that. That's great news. I'm not sure how many people know about that. We've seen it operate where you can go in and plug all these numbers and, you know, I keep looking at, you know, the sidewalk projects out on Sinkin Lane going into phase two, deep up and stuff. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that we're positioning ourselves so the people, especially in this community, know what is happening, you know, they, they are, we're driving things and we're staying on top of it, but sometimes these things happen well and they get buried. The things that surface to the top is something that didn't go well. You know, Home Street has been, you know, mentioned quite, quite a bit, about, you know, still not, you know, the road and all that stuff, but when we do something well, it kind of gets put in the file. So, I don't know if that's new business or not, but that's what I had on my mind.
That's good.
Thank you.
One request is to follow up, the circuit clerk's office had requested that, um, they consider allowing one parking space in front of the, uh, new judicial center to be designated from circuit clerk's office to bring, they, they have times when they're bringing documents. I guess they sent, um, also they have the runner that picks up stuff at the, at the post office, I don't know all the details, but if the city manager and the city police folks, of the courts or whoever's involved in that can just meet at some point at the circuit clerk. Did you hear what I... Just broke, okay. Sorry?
It's hard by the blowwork, man.
It's hard down there. You're in the dome of silence.
It's okay, cheeseburger. Chaos.
All right, next item then would be, uh, I think someone wanted to make a closed session.
We would go into closed session.
One second.
And wait a minute, wait a minute. In accordance with, uh, sixty-one point eight one, other subsection, one subsection D and F.
To discuss litigation.
To discuss litigation, pro, no, litigation personnel and there was something he's to point more, is that...
That goes in there.
Is that, what is it?
I think that goes in there.
Okay, does that cover his thing?
Ball of wax.
Okay.
Commissioner Ballard, seconded by...
I did.
Here's our watch. It's the first time I've ever got the numbers. In about ten years, I probably did one way back when.